Okay, I call this meeting to order at 7:40 for Monday, February 28th, 2022. Ms. Janun, please take role.
Mrs. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Bedun.
Here.
Salzat is absent. Mrs. Fawaz.
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
And Mr. Sabah.
Here.
Ms. Janun, please read the consent agenda.
Do I do the pledge first?
Well, let's just do the agenda. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Now, Ms. Janun, consent agenda, please.
Yep. Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the February 28th, 2022 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, February 14th, 2022, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, February 14th, 2022.
Support. We have a motion from Ms. Janun to approve the consent agenda, supported by Ms. Kaminsky. All in favor, signify by say nay.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Okay, business report.
No, we have Board Brightner.
Board Brightner, Madam President.
Oh, we're moving it around. Okay, let's do it.
All right, Madam President, thank you. I wanted to first thank and invite the team from Hillcrest, Principal Miss Reesad, kindergarten teacher Sharifa Bazzie, and Maya Salami. Please join us up at the podium. We invited this team to talk about, you know, the direction we're heading with early childhood. Too often, we are presenting to you and letting you know what's happening, but we want to bring in, you know, some of our best teammates who are actually making a difference. And this team here is making a difference, not just at Hillcrest, but across the district. Because as you know, we're using iReady. We're using the data. We're identifying where our strengths are, and we're trying to build off of that. So they put together a wonderful presentation for the board and the community so the community can see how we are focusing on early literacy in our schools. So Ms. Sade, please, if you and your team would like to come to the podium, and I turn it over to you.
I did have a comment. I'm looking forward to this presentation because I've heard that this is the dream team of early childhood in the district. And I know that there's big shoes to fill after you guys. So I'm excited to hear this and see this. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. I'm actually in a... Sharifa Bazzie and Maya Salami lead the way. I just want to say that it was a journey. Our school year has been ups and downs due to the pandemic, but the ladies have learned a lot, being new to the district, and being able to implement what they know as well as what they've seen and to help adjust our students to grow. So I'm going to have the ladies lead the way into showing you guys what they've learned and what they've discovered and what they've implemented and adjusted to helping our students grow. So thank you.
Hello. So my name is Maya Salami. I am a Hillcrest Husky. I've been teaching kindergarten for eight years now. Thank you for giving us the privilege of being here and able to share our growth in our classroom with you. So our mission and our goal. Our mission is to emphasize the importance of early childhood education and build a strong foundation for all our students. Our model of teaching is fit for all students to enjoy learning and reach their goals for the year.
So prior to starting the school year, we asked about the curriculum and matched the curriculum to the kindergarten state standards. Then we started creating... Just got to stop. Then we started creating a flow chart where we mapped out what we wanted our students to know and when do we want them to learn it by. So... There it is. Okay. So we created this flow chart that is divided by month and each by age month under age months with the state standard that we connected. So this is when we want our students to learn it by. And from this flow chart, we created a curriculum pacing guide. Thank you. So from this flow chart, we created this pacing guide. And this pacing guide is divided by week and for each subject area. These are our whole group lessons. And each math and ELA lesson is attached to an iReady lesson.
So if I may ask, you guys created this?
Yes.
The two of you?
Yes.
Wow, okay. I like what I'm seeing.
Okay, good.
Sorry. So then this takes us to our whole group instruction. And during our whole group instruction, we teach many, many lessons. We use an interactive board, just like this one. And students have whiteboards and expo markers in their hands so that way all students are participating. Some ways we teach is by writing, singing, thinking, like think, pair, share, read aloud, student-led instruction. We use the scaffolding model, which consists of prior knowledge. We make sure that we set a goal, and we give them a lot of pause time. We also try to ask rigorous questions rather than just yes-no questions.
And this brings us to our small group instruction. Our small group instruction is where the magic happens. So we formed our small groups based off of our BASS assessments and our students' learning strategies. When I call my students to the table, they take out their comprehension notebooks and they hand me a reading... They come in with this reading bag. And inside of the reading bag... Inside of the reading bag, there is a comprehension notebook that looks like this. And this is where we write all of their questions. And their questions may vary depending on where their level is. They have books, and they have a sight word ring. Now, some of our kindergartners are now reading fourth grade sight word lists, so they don't have a ring. They have an actual list with words on it. And all their books vary depending on their groups of students, depending on the group of students. So I usually give students two new books a week. And if we're starting off with a new book, depending if it's a fiction or a nonfiction book, is where we discuss, you know, what they're learning about in the story or the new sight words that they know and what sight words do they know from the story. So we start off with like a picture walk kind of model. And then we orally ask the questions and practice the sight words on a whiteboard. And then all questions in the lessons vary depending on the students' reading levels.
So while a teacher pulls for small groups, the rest of the class is working on stations. And stations are based on our whole group lessons for the week. For example, if we're teaching a minute lesson on syllables or parts of a word, there will be a station that consists of syllables or parts of a word. We have five stations, and all students visit the station during that day. We do rotations, which is about 15 to 17 minutes each time. That way, we have time to talk to our small groups and meet with them. Each station consists of hands-on, such as building sentences, using letters, and pipe cleaners to build fine motor skills. We also always have a writing, which might be free writing or a prompt writing. And then we make sure to do spiral lessons. So we taught rhyming, let's say, three weeks ago. We will spiral the lesson. That way, students are able to apply their knowledge by seeing it year-round. This way, students are familiar with it, not necessarily mastering it at this point, but they're familiar with it. We always have technology station, which is the iReady part. That way, they are prepared for their iReady exam three times a year. So collecting data. So how often should students be assessed? Collecting data is an important part of this in order for us to see the growth and changes in our students. We must test them frequently. So some grow faster than others. And that way, we were able to change our students' grouping. It is important to move students to appropriate learning groups so that they are receiving the best accommodations to fit their needs. And we do this very frequently. We change their groupings maybe monthly.
So after talking about the model that we're working on in the classroom, you guys want to see proof? Like, how is this working? And let me see your data. So we made some data charts. And over here, we can validate our data. So it's kind of... But we can also give you the data, which is the state child, chapter child. Do you see where the growth is coming from and where the percentile is coming from? After consolidating the data, you can see here this is our fall percentage. This is versus our quarterly assessments and their assessment math and ELA standards, quarterly for the report card. So here's our fall percentage. And here's our winter percentage. And you see most of our students are... And all of our students are...
I was going to say, don't say most. I looked at your data.
All. No, it is all. Definitely all.
Have you looked at these numbers? They're impressive. They really are.
And if we go on to our BASS data, so over here is more detailed about what did we test them on and what each child scored and how we got that percentage in the first chart. This is on October, and this is in January. So we tested them on uppercase letters, lowercase letters, comprehension, and we even tested them in math. And these are... This is what they get... This is their score in under report card. And we get to the difference, and we just put the percentage side by side so you guys can see the growth. And from there, we gave our... This is our M- assessment. And this is our iReady reading assessment. Okay, and... I'm sorry. And 68% of our students made growth of 41 to 91 points in the ESL classroom. And 70% of our students are in the 31st to the 90th percentile. We also, our non-ESL classroom, scored... 62% of our students made a growth of 41 to 80 points and 97% scored in the 31st percentile to the 90th percentile. So this is in our iReady reading. And then our last assessment was our BASS, which is our level reading assessment. And here, in the beginning of the year, BASS, we don't test students on reading a book. We test them on their letters and letter sounds. And when they came in, our non-ESL students, 57% of our students knew 40-plus letters. And now, 91% of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations on the BASS assessment. In the ESL classroom, 68% of our students knew only 21 to 39 letters. And now, 79% of our students are meeting or exceeding their BASS assessment. Let me go back to the presentation. Thank you. Okay, and here's our...
So these are just some of our stations or interactive pull groups. If you could see over there in the beginning of the year, you were teaching on the difference between a letter and a word. And then these are some manipulatives that they're using for the stations. As well as over here, if you notice over there, there is the letter Z. That's something towards the beginning of the year. And then now, we're working on sight words, the writing of sentences, putting it together, building, using the pipe cleaners or the shoelaces, and then writing the sentences as well.
And over here, we see how our students began writing. So drawing is a form of writing, and this is the way they started writing. And we would go around and dictate what their picture said. This is their writing now. They are writing complete sentences. They're starting with an uppercase letter, ending with punctuation. They have space between their words, and they're able to give you a complete thought. They're even able to write... We started with narrative writing. And here's their narrative writing on what they like to... What they do in the winter from the story, "The Missing Mitten." After we read "The Missing Mitten," they were able to write what they do in the winter.
And this is just continued writing sentences in our stations.
And here's more of our stations here. This is them doing vowels. And as you can see, this is more of a scaffold. This is from the beginning of the year till now. So some of these stations were in the beginning, and some of them are now. You can see the vowels now. This is their writing prompts. So they're able to answer writing prompts at this point in the school year. We love Ms. Salami. So... Change is good and, in fact, unavoidable. And this is a quote from Derek Benedict. And so we're changing a little bit of things in what we thought would be beneficial to our students and their needs. And our curriculum, the first thing that I would like to talk about is our curriculum that needs to match the report card. Our report card is very broad. As you can see, all of... They do match the state standards, and they do match, but they don't match our curriculum and our pacing. So that's something that we're slowly working on. Our classroom sizes. So I have 24 students in my class. Ms. Salami has 27 students in her class. So a strong focus, small group instruction is three students. Because of our large classroom sizes, we are currently seeing four to five students in each group. We don't only want to see our bottom 30 students. We want to see all of our students, which is why we're seeing so much growth, even with our high students. So you don't want to say, oh, well, the student is high. I'm just not... Let me work with the bottom 30. No, we see all of our students. We see all of our students every single day. It is a lot... It's a little bit difficult at times because you do have four to five students in a small group, but that's because we have such large classroom sizes. The percentile. So the district meeting percentile is the 15th percentile. The data we presented today reflects... Does not reflect the 15th percentile. It actually reflects at a 30th percentile. So we want our parents to know we are setting... Our students do a higher standard. We also want our students to be successful and challenged at the right pace. So our young five students currently do take the iReady assessment. And I believe that this assessment, this standardized test, is not fit for young five students. So I think we should kind of think about a different assessment that we can... We need data, obviously, on our young fives, but I feel like a standardized test like the iReady is just not fit for a four-year-old to sit on a computer for so long.
All righty, incoming assessment and observation. So we are focusing on our incoming kindergartners right now. So we would like to test our students during registration. We would also like to have Jump Start. Jump Start is at the end of the school year for one to two days. We have a parent meeting with expectations and prerequisites for our kindergarten. Parents get to leave, and students stay with us for about two to three hours, interacting with classmates and seeing their classroom. This way, we are able to observe students socially, not only academically, but we want to see how they are socially. This takes us to the fall. So it is called Soft Start. This happens the first week of school. Kindergartners have a half-day of school the first full week of school. This way, students are not overwhelmed. It can be their first time ever being in school. It could be a change in environment, new faces. This way, we ease them in. While students are playing and interacting, we'll be able to join and assist rather than just test students. In the afternoon, we will be able to schedule one-on-one with parents and children to test the KRA, the BASS task. By us doing this, we are not only building a strong foundation between home and school early on.
So like Ms. Salami said, we like to build that relationship between home and school. So we asked our parents for feedback. So the next five slides is actually our parents' feedback on what they thought is happening in their classroom and what they see. A lot of feedback, but we were so happy that they were happy. Thank you.
Um... I hope we're going to start copying this. These are our TOTs, train the trainers, I'm hoping.
If I may, Madam President, I want to be fair across the district. This is happening across the district. This is one example. I want, you know, Kenlock and Hyview not to think that...
Right, 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 right.
But this is where the whole professional learning community comes into play. These conversations are what we need to have. We have to keep in mind, great job. I mean, phenomenal job. And I've seen the data. They know I see the data because I think I sent everybody a letter on their data. But what has to happen is something we have to understand as a district. This is the first time as a district that we're actually in PLCs, that we're actually using data to drive our next steps. As you see, the teachers have an opportunity to talk about, these are some things we'd like to do differently, based on the data we have. This is, well, since September. So this is how much and how far we have gone in just five, six months. And if you can just imagine how much further this is going to be in three to five years. And the reason why he asked the kindergarten team to come is because, you know, this is where it starts. And if we can continue to move our youngest children that far in literacy, everything else will follow as time goes on, especially coming off of the pandemic. So I want to reiterate that the work they're doing is phenomenal. And the work they're doing, we are working together as a unit. And I think the entire district understands now that it's not about Sharifa or Maya. It's about every kinder, first, second, third-grade teacher. It's about every child. And you can't argue data. So when you look at the data and they get together in their PLCs, building administrators know that where the data is working, we want to see that continuously emulated throughout.
Absolutely.
But it takes time. So I want to give them a lot of credit.
Okay, wow, look at this. Where do I start? No, go ahead, Mr. Sabah.
I'm blown away.
Yes.
I really am. I just, I can't... I mean, just, you know, when you started with the flow chart and the way you guys put things together, you're probably thinking, what's this guy talking about? It's just like, you know, basic elementary to us. It's not to us, you know? I mean, some people are natured for certain things. And honestly, please, I hope you don't take offense to this, but it is my opinion that you guys were born to do this, just based on... No, thank you, because I'm just sitting here writing stuff you guys are saying, and I'm scratching my head going... And I know other elementary schools are doing this, but... Now, Ms. Salami, how long have you been in the district?
Uh, this is my first year I started.
Yeah, I remember when we... So you're both additions to the district. So first of all, kudos to you, Ms. Lazar, because I know we have some fantastic staff in the entire district, but when you make the team better with additions and it's like this, I mean, just phenomenal. I'm amazed. I really am. I'm blown away. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Bedun.
So first of all, I want to extend a thank you for Ms. Sade, for having your team feel comfortable to think outside the box because that's what they did. They thought outside the box. That was the first thing I wanted to do. The second thing, Sharifa, you brought up a good point. You said, just because our strongest student is strong doesn't mean we can't make them stronger. That's the first thing I learned when I became a leader at GM, was focus on your strengths and make them stronger. So I loved hearing that. Also, what about sharing your... Now, none of this is patented, right? Just full disclosure. Anything you work on on district property becomes district property. No, just kidding. But are you okay sharing this with your peers?
Of course.
And also having peer interactions and focus groups? I think, Ms. Sade, you can flow through Dr. Masalim?
It's like Mr. Masalim said, we're one team, so of course.
Good.
It will help everybody.
I think that needs to happen, not only in kindergarten, but this is one example. I think it has to happen across the board. And I think you showed us your flow chart, and you also showed basically your lesson plans. I mean, you go through everything that's pre-prepped. You could turn that in. So from what I see as a parent, if I can see that, I know what my child's working on any time of the day, which is just unbelievable. Sorry, I'm almost done, Ms. Berry. Also, I'm a data guy, right? I look at numbers all day. I did notice you have 48 students. Forty-seven out of 48 have grown. That's 98% growth, and that's unbelievable. And there's honestly, it was just one child that went, you know, a couple of points down, but they're already almost on the cusp of the 90th percentile. So I just want to say, you know, unbelievable job, and keep doing what you're doing. And if you guys do hit any roadblocks, this is an open forum through Dr. Masalim and his team, obviously, starting with Ms. Sade. Please flow it to the board. You have our support. Continue to make our children stronger.
Thank you.
All right?
Just so to be clear, it is a non-negotiable in our district to work in a PLC. And we look at the data, and we use the data. Now that the data's coming in, the data drives the conversations. This is not something that has been done in the past.
Okay, Ms. Kaminsky.
So I just wanted to tell you that now you guys have made me very nervous because I'm reading to the kindergartners on Wednesday. And I was... I was going to read "Pokie Little Puppy," thinking I'm not reading that. So thank you.
Who's going to bring in Socrates?
Um, Ms. Fawaz, go ahead.
I also would like to congratulate you guys and Ms. Reesad for a wonderful job, presented very well. And, you know, like us, we're all, I think, data-driven at work. So the fact that you guys took the time to actually, you know, present the data and have it all for us was great because that would have been the first thing I know that I would have asked for. So I think you guys are doing amazing. And I like your suggested changes. And I mean, I don't know if we're able to be implementing them or we would be implementing them, you know, in the fall, but I think that's a... Those are really good changes to start with.
And I agree. And this is the whole process. Because like I said, this is the first time we've done this. So coming off of the pandemic, we established, okay, this is what we want to do. And now that the data's coming in and we're getting the feedback, I don't make that decision. I let the teams make that decision. And that's where those decisions work through the PLC to the principal. Then the principal comes to us in our meetings and says, look, these are the things we need to do. And then we make those adjustments. We're going to be making adjustments for as long as I'm here. If it's 20 years, we're going to make adjustments every single year for 20 years because no matter what, we strive for perfection, but there's always going to be times we need to adjust. Adjustments are fine, as long as people understand. It's a non-negotiable.
So out of curiosity, and it may not have happened, but pre-COVID, and I know you guys weren't here, do we have data for that, just for comparison?
No. This is the first set of true data that we're using that is actually growth data based on the iReady, which is based on the Common Core, which is based on what the students will see on the M-STOP, PSAT, and SAT.
Okay. This is our first... We just...
Brand new.
Already is this year. So we're basing it off of, like you said, the fall and the winter. And we're seeing growth even from that short period of time, which, I mean, is amazing considering where our students were. And so I say, you know, want to say thank you for coming and presenting because sitting up here and talking is enough for me. So I don't... I know how that feels, but I like the fact that, you know, you know, it was said about challenging all students. I mean, my son, when he was in kindergarten, was bored. And as a mom, you don't want to hear that your child is bored or they're misbehaving in class because they're bored. And so I appreciate that. And I know the whole PLC and, you know, learning from each other. And I know you're saying, Dr. Masalim, that we're doing that as a district. And everybody's going to give and take from each other. But your data, the data's there. And, you know, thank you guys for coming and presenting. And I can't wait to see where they are at the end of the year. So thank you, guys.
So now, my question is, I know you were talking about how you feel iReady is not the tool that you would like to see used. What... Have you thought about what you would like to see? Have you talked to Ms. Sade?
So, no, I like iReady. I don't... So, I know, I like iReady, I don't, for young five.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yes.
So Bass, so I taught young five for four years prior to kindergarten this year, and we use the tasks. So we had data, we had, we tested them on sight words, we tested them on more age-appropriate assessments because once they get to kindergarten, they are going to take the iReady. And it was kind of a push point with my parents as well. Well, you know what, this year, we're not doing standardized testing. We're just focusing on their social, emotional, and their foundation. So they are leaders in kindergarten. And that's what they were. So when they went to kindergarten, they were confident, they were leaders. They knew what to do coming into the door. We didn't overwhelm them with standardized testing. So that's what I.
Right. I love, I really, I enjoyed seeing your presentation. I can see the passion and how you really are about the children and giving them all an equal chance. And I love how you said, we don't just work with this group, because I was one of those parents that I didn't have this group. My children are not this group, they were probably this group. And I felt like they didn't get that opportunity. So I really appreciate you saying that and modeling that. And Ms. Saad, thank you so much for your support, because I know you're behind all this.
Thank you.
Great job. And again, thank you for being here, I know, taking time away from your families.
Yes.
Appreciate it, thank you so much. So, and just to conclude, again, this is part of the process. You know, I made the directive from the very beginning that everyone's taking the iReady. And the reason for this was we needed a starting point. As we get feedback, these conversations come back. And this is why we built in the five professional development days in the calendar, because it gives them time to have these conversations, plus the professional development days that we're gonna have before the beginning of the year. Moreover, we're gonna be using our categorical funding to support and pay teachers that come in over the summer to continue developing what you saw today. So it's gonna take time to build and develop. And the thing is, what we always want to emphasize is we always give teachers flexibility to take chances. And what I mean by that, a lot of times, teachers are afraid to take chances because they're afraid to fail. If you're taking, I've always told teachers, if you're taking a chance to improve a child's life, you never fail, you just make adjustments. And we're giving them that flexibility. And I will tell you, every single teacher in the Crestwood Schools up from pre-K to grade four thus far has received a letter from me concerning their iReady literacy scores. And now I'm in the process of looking at middle school and high school because I am also following the data. Because then, when Andrea O'Hara and her team come to me with their professional development plan, they know what I'm looking for, and these are the things that I'm looking for. Well, are we doing A? Are we doing, and it's gonna take time. And we have veteran teachers as well as new teachers who are really getting together and working to develop. And we're gonna continue moving forward, so it's exciting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to the business report.
The first item is approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for the upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky. I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 5A1.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Ms. Janune. At the Crestwood Board of Education, approve the requisitions per attachment 5A1. All, is there any questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number two, approval of edu staff addendum. The Crestwood School District currently works with edu staff to provide substitute teachers to the district. Administration would like to expand the scope of the services, services, excuse me, to include substitute parent professionals and substitute secretaries as needed. This will allow the district to have a broader subpool for filling daily absences.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Badu.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the addendum to the edu staff contract per attachment 5A2.
Support.
We have a motion from Mr. Badu, supported by Ms. Palas. At the Board of Education, approve the addendum to the edu staff contract per attachment 5A2. Are there any questions or comments? I do have a question. Do we still have, I understand we still have building subs?
We had some building subs at the middle school, but they've been told that they were not allowed, they had the building subs and they've been removed. They were there just for about a week, I believe.
So how about teachers? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Teachers.
Yeah, yeah, they were.
So we're not.
No, that should have been canceled out, and I received word, Dr. Lazar found out that prior to some changeover between a couple of secretaries, there was some miscommunication, so it's been resolved.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, with that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all that I have.
Okay, personnel report, Dr. Lazar.
So our first action item tonight is the appointment of food services kitchen assistant for Kenlock Elementary, Ms. Soraya Takash. Mrs. Takash has been subbing as the kitchen assistant at Kenlock Elementary. She has been a great team player, reliable, always achieving her duties to the best of her ability with a positive attitude. Ms. Takash is excited to be joining our Kenlock team as a kitchen assistant.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janune.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring Soraya Takash as a kitchen assistant for the 21-22 school year, according to the CFS contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A1.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Janune, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Board of Education approve the hiring of Soraya Takash as a kitchen assistant for the 21-22 school year, according to the CFS contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A1. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our second action item this evening is for the appointment of a GSRP lead teacher, Ms. Nancy Kishu. Ms. Kishu holds a Bachelor of Science degree in children and families from the University of Michigan Dearborn. She has five years of experience as a lead teacher in a Head Start program and has worked with children with varying levels of needs. Ms. Kishu has also worked to assist families in service coordination and recruitment and enrollment of families in Head Start programs.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabah.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Ms. Kishu as a lead GSRP teacher at Cherry Hill Baptist Church for the 2021-2022 school year, according to the GSRP Intuition-Based Schedule II, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A2.
Support.
We have a motion for Mr. Sabah, supported by Mr. Badu, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Ms. Kishu as a lead GSRP teacher at Cherry Hill Baptist for the 21-22 school year, according to the GSRP Intuition-Based School Schedule II, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A2. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our third action item this evening is the appointment of a music education teacher for Highview Elementary, Ms. Angela Blumenthal. Ms. Blumenthal earned her Bachelor of Science and a Bachelor of Music Education from the Eastern, from the Eastern Michigan University. She has six years of teaching experience, where she uses music to boost concentration levels, memorization skills, and improved math scores. She also conducted the choir during the 2015 ribbon-cutting ceremony at Detroit Metro Airport. Ms. Blumenthal is passionate about connecting literacy and art and enjoys supporting students in making cross-curricular connections.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janune.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Angela Blumenthal as music education teacher for the 21-22 school year, according to the CFT contract, BA, step five, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A3.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Janune, supported by Mr. Sabah, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Angela Blumenthal as a music education teacher for the 21-22 school year, according to the CFT contract, BA, step five, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A3. All in, is there any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our next action item is the appointment of a district nurse, Ms. Madeline Berry. Ms. Berry earned her Bachelor of Science in Nursing from the University of Detroit Mercy and her Master of Science in Nursing from Wayne State University. She has experience specializing in maternal and infant health as well as pediatrics. In addition, she has experience as a clinical instructor where she mentored students in creating care plans, assigning course objectives, and goal monitoring. Ms. Berry is a Crestwood graduate and is excited to be a part of the Crestwood School District again.
Madam Chair. Mr. Badu.
Mr. Badu.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Madeline Berry as a school nurse for the 2021-2022 school year, according to the CFT contract, MA, step five, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A4.
Support.
We have a motion from Mr. Badu, supported by Ms. Janune. At the Crestwood Board of Education, approve the hiring of Madeline Berry as a school nurse for the 21-22 school year, according to the CFT contract, MA, step five, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A4. Are there any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I just had a question. I'm glad we were getting another nurse, I believed in that a lot. And I got the schedule for the nurse that we have currently. So being that our current nurse has a pretty strict schedule of what school she's going to be at, is Madeline going to be a floater and go where needed, as needed?
Actually, we're gonna have them sit together and come up with a balanced schedule where they can both support the schools more regularly.
Okay, but then, obviously, if I've got a kid at the middle school that's having a diabetic crisis, someone's gonna go there.
Of course.
Okay.
Okay, my question is, I know that we have staff that's been giving, like meds and stuff. Now that we have two nurses, are we gonna be able to? Because I know Nurse Tamika used to do all that.
The nurses are gonna handle that. Andrea O'Hara is not here to discuss that. I mean, she's gonna give me more of the information. I know you requested that information. So Andrea will be able to give me more of the detailed information. But the purpose behind the nurses is that the teachers don't have to give those meds.
Excellent. So, and I understand that there's paras that have to take, have taken that on. So we're gonna.
We're gonna work on that, yes.
Awesome, that's good to hear. Okay, with that being said, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our last action item this evening is the appointment of an art education teacher for Hillcrest Elementary, Mr. David Brown. Mr. Brown earned his Bachelor of Arts from Oberlin College. He has two years of teaching experience and has also served as an adjunct professor at Wayne County Community College. He has also written and published five books and produced and directed a film. Mr. Brown is very passionate about arts education.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janune.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of David Brown as an art education teacher for the 21-22 school year, according to the CFT contract, BA, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A5.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Janune, supported by Ms. Kaminsky, that the Board of Education approve the hiring of David Brown as an art teacher for the 21-22 school year, according to the CFT contract, BA, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A5. Is there any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I just want to commend the district and us because it's so important to have a full curriculum and not all schools are putting and investing in the arts. And I'm just really, really happy to see that.
I totally agree. With that being said, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And our one informational item for this evening is the resignation of Ms. Megan Pratt, social worker from Hillcrest Elementary.
Moving on, did we ever, I know, I was probably asked, I didn't, I had a crazy weekend. Did we ever get the follow-ups from the resignations or the?
Yes, they were in last week's Friday updates.
The?
This previous Friday.
The previous assistant principal?
He has not responded.
He hasn't responded, okay. Can we follow up with him?
I have, and I know Dr. Lazar has.
Okay, all right.
I had asked Dr. Lazar that, and that's what she had said, she would send it back out to him.
Okay, thank you.
Has anyone else reached out to him, or no?
It's kind of inappropriate.
Right?
It would be the.
I think with an exit survey, though, too, you can't force or require that. I mean, you would hope that people would be comfortable enough to provide feedback, but whether or not they do is their choice. So there have been conversations, though, there have, you know, so we have both spoken.
And I know Dr. Lazar and I reached out. I don't know of anyone else that would have, I don't know if anyone else should have, but. And I know Mr. Casebolt also reached out to him as well, as his former principal. And I had a conversation with him here prior to, and we talked. And, you know, him, our conversation was basically, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing his success and his growth in the STEM Academy he's going to. You know, it's gonna be a very good opportunity for him. Great.
Okay, thank you. With that, moving on to superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. So no action items, it's got some informational items. First, I want to congratulate on February 24th, Nadia Saab, who signed with the University of Michigan Dearborn for soccer. So that's another great thing there. I saw their coach, and I told him, it's Coach George. He actually coached my daughter as well. And my daughter's gonna be playing with these, my daughter's senior year this year playing, so she's gonna be playing with a lot of our graduates. And I told Coach George, I said, you got a pipeline over here, we want to see it happening. So he's excited, he loves, he said he loves what he sees coming out of Crestwood, so that's great. The CHS Quiz Bowl team advanced to the state playoffs, so that's awesome. And then some very important end-of-the-year dates, and we will get these on the Friday update reoccurring for you. The National Honor Society induction ceremony is May 14th. You should all be receiving an invitation for that. Senior prom is May 20th. Senior finals, May 25th and May 26th. Senior graduation rehearsal, June 2nd. Honors night, June 2nd. And the graduation will be June 4th. We did put a rain date in there, but I don't have any intentions of using that, all right? So, and our graduation's gonna be similar to what we did last year outside on our facilities. It was beautiful. And you know what, it was worth every single penny because the families remembered it. And that's what we want to continue to do. Tin Can Raffle, again, another phenomenal success. I don't know how much they raised, I'll find out for you later. But I want to thank Hudda Karazli, Nadia Hamou, Sukina Mazher, Fatima Baroudi, Mina Mansur, and Serene Saab, Summer Yunus, Tagrid Hazimi, Fay Hajej, and Trusty Alzayat, and the entire board's support for this Tin Can Raffle. It took a lot of people to get this going. And when I came on Saturday, it was a nice thing to see so many people active. You can see the school spirit. You know, I was having a conversation with Jen Ray the other day, and she was just talking to me, and she was telling me that she's seen so much more school spirit that she's, it's really bringing things to life again. So we love seeing that. So thank you to everyone who volunteered, and thank you to the entire board for your support. Scholarships, scholarships, scholarships. Parents, I hope you're watching, don't depend on your children to apply for scholarships. You need to drag them to the computer, and you need to pull up those scholarships with them and sign up. This has been something that I've been fighting since I was a high school principal. And guess what? I fought it with my daughter, and I'm now fighting it with my son, who's gonna be a graduate this year. There are a lot of school scholarships out there. On the Crestwood High School website, as well, the counselors, they sent out links to scholarships. There are a lot of scholarships out there. And the problem is, too many people think like, okay, I need a $50,000 scholarship, or I need. No, there are so many $1,000, $500, $2,000 scholarships that if you apply for 50 and you get five, that's $5,000. So you have to apply, 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 apply. And counselors will make themselves available to help students with those scholarships. And students, if you ask your counselors, or you ask anyone for a letter of recommendation, including me, give us a deadline date. And if we don't meet that deadline date, haunt us. It's not that we don't want to do, but sometimes we may forget. So we're always there for you. Riverside Middle School Social Media Parent Meeting, it was a great event. March 3rd, they talked, March 3rd, they're gonna talk about vaping. They had an event a couple of weeks back, talked about social media and proper use of social media. March 3rd, it's from 1:30 to 3:00. March 3rd is gonna discuss vaping. March 17th, Mental Health 101. April 14th, cyberbullying. vaping. March 17th, mental health 101. April 14th, cyber bullying. May 12th, parenting and adolescent, setting limits and boundaries with your child. If the board remembers, one of my promises when I came in was part of the social emotional piece, was also parent education pieces. I have to give Mr. Rashid Baydoun and the entire social emotional learning team, as well as Mr. Scott Caseball, for giving them that opportunity to do these things. This is gonna make a difference. We have to educate our parents as well.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I'm sorry. I know this is from 1:30 to 3:00, and I think we probably have some parents that aren't able to attend at those times. Are these taped at all, or do parents have access to the information if they work?
Anyone?
They are?
Yes. Good, I'm glad.
Thank you.
Thank you, cause I was gonna have to ask that question. But thank you. Thank you.
It did go out as such to all the parents, that if you can't make it, you can-
Perfect, thank you.
See, that's why-
Thank you, Rashid.
That's why I try to surround myself with the smarter people than I, cause they figure this stuff out before I-
I have a kid here, so I get the notification.
Uh, next is March's Reading Month. Every school's got things planned. I'm scheduled to read. I know Dr. Lazar's scheduled, Mrs. Mar, we're all scheduled to read. And it's a great time, it's fun, and we're looking forward to it. So, it's just emphasizing that literacy piece. And then finally, just to conclude, you know, I want to, again, thank Sharifa, Bazzy, and Maya Salami, and Ms. Saad, but all of the teachers in the Crestwood School District who have put aside their egos, who have put aside, this is the way we are supposed to do things, and who are working to develop. I mean, I'm in conversation, I, I love walking through our elementaries. I'm looking at the data. I'm seeing data growth across the board. Kenlock, Hillcrest, Highview, Riverside, Crestwood, we're seeing the data growth. And what we're seeing also are the effects of the pandemic. So as you go up in grade level, you see growth, but not as much growth as you see in the lower levels. And a lot of that has to do, and that's where a lot of my research is on, is on stu, literacy, looking at when students are behind. I am excited for our future. I am very excited for our future. We are making moves, we are making decisions, and we're also making decisions when it comes to personnel that best fits where we are and where we need to be, based on who we have, what we need, and where we need to go. So I'm excited for the future. I love the direction our team is going, and we're always looking to adjust and be better. And I thank the board for their support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you, Dr. Masalem. Any public comments? It's so nice to be able to see people's faces and smiles.
Right.
Right?
Thanks, Kristin. So I'm just gonna read, smash it real quick.
Is that you making all that noise back there?
This meeting of the board is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. This is not the time for debate or argument. Do not mention any student or staff names. In order to permit a fair allotment of time to participants, speakers will be limited to three minutes. The president may extend this time to five minutes per person when needed. Up to a half hour is provided for public input. Direct all questions to the board president. And Ms. Basha?
Good evening. I'm, oh, not me.
Okay, sorry. Pick your name for the board.
My name is Deanna Basha. I'm a, the Kenlock PTA president, as well as a parent in the, in the district. I have a son at Riverside, and my other son is at Kenlock. This evening, I'm addressing a concern that we've had at Kenlock for quite so many years. My son, my kids have been in the district for six years now, and in the six years that we've been there, our, our playground has not been able to be used. Last year, our principal worked really hard in trying to get some, just something, get some mulch pulled out there, hoping that the flooding would stop. But unfortunately, we haven't been able to use the playground as much as we had hoped. Our, our PTA has raised funds for a new playground for the kindergarten and preschoolers, but that's on the other side of the building. We were fortunate to be involved in a meeting a couple days ago with Ms. Marvaso and the architectural team, and we were told that the blacktop was where the new construction's gonna be happening. Unfortunately, that's the only place where our kids get to play. And we know that for their social emotional growth, that's not acceptable, if that's gonna be taken away from them. And I just come to you tonight to try to get some answers as to what are the plans, where are the kids gonna play once the construction happens? Because if the playground can't be used, and the blacktop can't be used, where are these kids gonna be able to let out all their energy, rather than in the classroom?
Well, I, I can comment. I know exactly what you're talking about, but I thought that there was a, wasn't there a survey done of the drainage?
Mm-hmm.
And I thought that they did something with it, but it doesn't sound like-
That was before my time. The drainage was before my time. I don't know what occurred with that. But the surveys that were done was to ensure that we could add classrooms and it was, it was capable of maintaining it. In reference to, and thank you, Mrs. Basha, I know you had emailed me and-
And you did an amazing job. I just, like I said, I, I just wanna make sure that before I pass the baton, cause this is my last year at Kenlock as the PTA president, that we have some answers for the new board, cause we're gonna have elections soon. And I just wanna make sure that we were able to use our funds towards things that we can actually use. That's my only-
So, what I can do is, because we, within the plans, there is room for the kids. So what we can do is, I can, Ms. Basha, I'll set up a conversation with our site maintenance team, as well as Mrs. Marvaso, and I'll have a conversation too, to look at it, to show you where we're gonna be able to adjust and make those adjustments. And in reference to the flooding, we're gonna, you know, we have to review that. That's not something that we have reviewed, my administration. Our focus has been on the expansion projects so we can reduce class sizes.
So is there any way that some type of drainage? I know exactly what she's talking about, because at one time, if a kid fell into that, they could have drowned, cause I had that issue when my kids were there. But I thought that, I was assured by previous administration that it was being handled, and obviously it has not.
So with the previous administration, with our previous principal, she had told us that it wasn't a district issue, and I think it was, I brought it up before to the board. They told us it was a city issue. So that's, I didn't intend to step on your toes by any means by emailing-
Oh, no, you're great. No, don't worry about it.
By emailing Bill Bazzy, cause I know that he's new administration. This is something that we can work on together. I'm willing to, as the PTA president, you know, help as much as I can. I've already, I'm seeking out grants to help get more money for playground equipment and stuff for our students. But like I said, I just wanna make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot, or not gonna be able to use the equipment as wisely, or as we had hoped.
Well, and I agree with you, and I did see Mr. Mayor Bazzy's response. So, we can look further into it to see, because I, I don't know, see, I don't know if it's a sewage issue. I don't know because where it backs up.
It's a drainage issue.
I don't know, you know, so I, we, we haven't, I, our team hasn't looked into why it's flooding, where in turn, I've only known of it flooding once, since I've been superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't know it was a continuous problem. So I have to look further into it, yes.
And I understand, I think my only concern is like, every day that I ask my son, "Did you guys have recess today? Was it outside?" It was either no, because obviously the cold. But the other thing is, it's always on the blacktop, mom. We can't use the playground, we can't use the playground. So that's unfortunate. And I, I don't think that had anything to do with, you know, you or Mrs. Marvaso's, you know, decision-making. I totally appreciate and support both of you. I just said, I wanna make sure that this is addressed, because sooner than later, we're gonna have an issue when next school year comes around, and we're like, wait, what are we gonna do with 550 students?
Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Kaminsky.
So, I was on the board when the previous administration checked into that. There was a city engineer that came out, and hopefully Mr. Bazzy has, or Mayor Bazzy has access to that information. There was a drainage problem where the pipes that went from the school to the city were not the same size, and they felt that that caused some issue. At that time, we did take where the drain is on the property of the school, and they built up around it because they were worried about leaves and things blocking it. And then someone tripped over it, so they had to take the, what they built around it. There was supposed to be a screen over it. I know initially the screen was put on to keep the leaves from blocking it. I have no idea if that screen still exists.
So we've heard from the students, or even from staff as well, that they said, well, it's being backed up because of leaves and sticks and whatnot, and kids are sticking stuff down there. But at the same time, like, it, it isn't just a school issue, it's a community issue, because the kids in that neighborhood who may not even attend our, our school wanna play there. My kids play there year-round.
Sure.
And, well, they try to play year-round. We only get the summer, but technically, it's usually not able to be used for eight months out of the year, which is the time that we're in school.
Yep.
So, you know, we need to do something about it.
No, you have a very valid concern. It's been a non-growing problem.
Go ahead, Ms. Falas.
So this has been an ongoing issue, cause it's, it's always flooded. I don't, I don't know when, I'm sure when Van Valkenburg was here, they did it too. But I do remember even as recent, and not so recent, but even when Scott Jacobs first came, that was al, that was also one of the items that he had looked into.
Yep.
So, honestly, I've heard every reason under the sun of why it floods, but it's never been corrected. So it's never been resolved.
That's my turn.
The, the schools looked at it every, I mean, yeah, I mean-
Because I, I know what, exactly what they're talking about. It's, it gets very-
So there should, I would think, I mean, Scott maybe still have this, you know, what he viewed then.
I'll circle back with Scott. I'll circle back with the mayor, and I'll circle back with the city engineering office, and I'll work with Kristin to see whatever we can find.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Baydoun?
If it may, I can recommend only, but if it may, we should take this off Dr. Masalem's hands, and we should allow our public relations committee to handle this one, because it's an ongoing issue that was prior administration, now a new administration. I think we should work together. We have a PR committee that can do this. I can honestly volunteer if someone can't do it. I think we need a liaison to help in regards to the mayor's office and the board office. I don't think it should fall on Dr. Masalem.
I agree.
Just a recommendation to the board.
Um, I'd like to hear if, I mean, what do you think, Dr. Masalem?
I'm, I'm fine with whatever the board decides. You, you asked me to go to the moon, I'll do the best I can.
Okay, I mean-
My understanding, and I'm not at all opposed to that, was the committees were to research things out and bring information. I don't want to step on your toes by doing anything. So your input would be appreciated.
I'm okay if I, I'll reach out. I appreciate that, Trustee Baydoun. I'll reach out. I have good relationships with everybody in the city, in the city's office. And then I'll bring it back to the public relations committee.
I think this is so big, it should be, we should do it in conjunction.
Yeah, no, of course. What it's gonna come down to, and what it really sounds like, just like with the parking issues and the traffic issues, it's just gotta be a city-district partnership. And I knew it flooded, but I didn't realize the extent of it.
It's weekly.
I thought it was like normal parks, how when it rains too much, it floods a little bit, then it goes away. So I will, like I said, I'll circle back with Scott Jacobs, the city, the mayor's office, and the city engineering office, and I'll try to get, and then I know Kristin, who always finds things for me. She'll, she'll look and see if there's anything in our files in reference to that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Sabah?
I looked for every puddle I could find. There's a kid to jump in, but I gotta tell you, to hear, to hear a kid could drown in there, that's disturbing. I, I don't know why this would be a city issue, Sue. I mean, you, you were here, I don't know, but-
They said there was drainage.
From the building. This is not, this is-
No, where it goes to the street, that there was two different, and again, I don't know anything about this, but they said there was two different sized pipes, and that the pipes that were going from the city side were too small, and they were also clogged and old and disrepair.
Yeah, leave issues.
And I don't know that the city ever did anything-
So I got a question. We got the backside of the building that we're putting on the blacktop, which is extended backwards towards the neighbors, right? And then we got the grass to the east of the building.
Correct.
Which is a fairly large-sized piece of grass, I think. There's a place set over there already.
That gets really mushy and floods too.
Not like the other side does.
No, not like the other side.
But it's, we still can't, the kids can't use it.
Really?
Yeah. So, and that was just newly put last year, right before COVID, and then the kids didn't even get to use it for, you know, about a year. And now, coming in this year, the, the preschoolers and kindergartners rarely get to use it. So it's just-
So, well, when I circle back, I'll also look at and see if there is a major issue there. We can also look back and see, and I'll work with Penny and Scott and the team-
Doesn't sound like an easy fix here, man.
To see what we can do, maybe with an additional blacktop, or something of such. We'll look at that. We'll talk with the architects who are running the plant.
You mean on the backside where the park is now?
It was-
No, I would just, I'll just look at the entire facility to see if there's anything additional we can do.
It, it was definitely looked at with this last bond. I know that for a fact, because I had been bringing it up for years.
It was stretched.
And, and some, no, something was followed up, and I know that there was a leaf issue, and like you said, the basin was covered with leaves, and it caused a huge problem. But Scott would probably know.
Yeah, so I'll circle back at that information. I'll share all that information with the board.
Thank you, Ms. Basha, for bringing that.
And Mrs. Basha, thank you, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
No, thank you. We appreciate you.
She was really good.
Yes.
She was good.
It's our future Charger right there. Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, any other comments, or? Okay. Any board comments? Mr. Sabah?
Yeah, I just, first and foremost, I just wanna thank Ms. Bazzy, Ms. Salami, and Ms. Saad again. I'm, I'm still kind of railing from that. I mean, you know, every strong building has a strong foundation, otherwise it will never survive. And let me tell you, they're building one heck of a foundation in that school. You heard the, the statement that change is necessary. Change is the only constant that we have as human beings. So, and they're keeping up with it. I just, I, I can't thank them enough. Wanna congratulate Ms. Nadia Saab. I'm sure Father Yunus is very proud. We go back a long way, he and I, and this is just a phenomenal thing to have your, your child sign on to, to play college athletics. But I do have a question, something that was brought up earlier. I'm curious. The question was asked about Mr. Schneider and whether or not he had completed his exit interview. Was there a reason that Mr. Schneider was so important for an exit interview?
No.
We can't discuss it, cause it's a personnel item.
No, 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 I don't wanna discuss the, I'm talking about, like, why this, this exit interview is-
I, I know Dr. Lazar received an email about the exit interview. Followed it up, she asked me, and Dr. Lazar and I both reached out to ensure that we reach out to everyone who has an exit interview, to ensure that, we, we just don't want anyone to think that we're not reaching out to everyone who doesn't-
You're the only ones that should be reaching out, is the administration.
Well, it's Dr. Lazar. I usually don't reach out, but this time I was gonna assist Dr. Lazar, and I reached out.
I'm just curious as to, I mean, why this was, this particular person was brought up for an exit interview.
So I asked Dr. Lazar about both people who, who just recently left.
Two people. I, that's the only heard today, it wasn't Mr. Schneider, the only name I heard. So I was just curious as to why, that's all.
For me, it was a matter of when we last asked for exit interviews, and we'd only received the one. So there were two people after that person that left. So I asked, did we receive exit interviews for those two that left? So it wasn't a matter of one was more important than the other.
Well, that's the only name I heard, so that's why I was curious by that focus on that person.
Well, and that's why I only responded about the one.
All right, thank you.
Well, my email to Dr. Lazar was Ms. Pratt and Mr. Schneider that left. So, and it was-
I'm just talking about tonight, yeah, I don't know. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Baydoun, any questions or comments?
Yeah, originally, Madam Chair, you sent me here. Now he takes the first round. So we're gonna have to reassess our seating.
I'd like to see you move, you think.
Not gonna happen. So, congratulations to the Crestwood High School Quiz Bowl. I know they're moving on to states. Also, Nadia Saab, congratulations on signing. Boys wrestling regionals and states, good luck there to everyone who's participating. Girls' basketball districts is this week. Good luck. Go Chargers there. Also, the boys' basketball districts are next week. Like to see everyone out, supporting all of our athletic sports. And this goes out, you know, all the spring sports are around the corner. So, you know, prepare yourselves for that. Lot more chaos outside, a lot more fun gonna be outside as the weather changes. So good luck to everyone participating in our spring sports. And then going back just real quick to Sharifa and Maya's presentation, you know, and, and Trustee Sabah touched on this, but I, I wanna elaborate a little bit. Why not be a part of the change, right? It's be a part of the change because we are progressing. We are moving in the right direction. The scores are moving forward. I think in the past, we've had some hiccups because of COVID, but I think the whole world is having, or had a hiccup. So, continue to grow and support each other as peers. That's very important across the board. But just, the last thing I wanna leave with you is be a part of the change.
Okay, Ms. Falas.
Okay, I'm not gonna repeat everything they both said, so I, I second everything they said, and welcome to all the new hires, and just good night.
Thank you.
Ms. Janun?
So, for the, in the future, I guess the assumption would be that if somebody completes an exit interview, it'll automatically-
It'll automatically enter the folder.
So then that won't be a question in the future. So from, the reason I had asked was because there were two people that had left when we had asked for exit. So I just, the assumption was that they were there and we just-
And I set up the folder, and I think I put the link in the Friday memo, so it'll constantly be there. They will automatically be in the folder.
So then there won't be a question about, okay, in the future. So, over the weekend, I took, Friday and Saturday, took a class with MASB, one of the CBA courses. I know I sent everybody email, and nobody replied to me, but it's okay. So, it was about board procedure and kinda stuff like this as well, just kind of like where we're all on the same page as to how to handle things, or how we want things handled, whether it be emailing Dr. Masalem, or answering a question, like public relations questions, or if somebody asks from the media a question, and how we respond. It would be nice if we were all on the same page, and if we had something that kinda said, obviously that we all agreed upon. And as it said in the class, if you're, if one person's not on the same page, then it's not gonna work. But I think it'd be nice if we came together as a board, or we could do it. I don't know, again, nobody responded, so I don't know how anybody feels about that. But it would be something that we did, or the policy committee could do, and then come back to the board as a whole. But I feel like there are sometimes a little bit of a disconnect, and not intentionally, but that there is, that maybe somebody isn't sure of, you know, like I said. I know you had said once before, when you send me an email, or when you send somebody an email, CC me on there. Stuff like that, that I think that if we all were on the same page, we would work better as a board. So again, I don't know how everybody feels about that, but that was just something that I-[1776.83]
I would like to say, we could call a committee of the whole meeting and go over that document that you did share with us, if everybody's willing to that, to do that.
I don't know if anybody looked at it, did you write, did anybody look at it?
I skimmed through it, yes.
We couldn't respond to you.
No, you could have responded to me without replying all, yeah, yeah. I was just saying, we don't wanna go back and forth in regards to responding, replying all to everybody, but.
So, I mean, if you wanna come up with a date, you know, when everybody's available, it would be a good sit-down discussion for all of us.
I didn't respond because it was from your personal email, so I didn't know.
Was it? Oh, I apologize.
So I didn't know if it was a data spill, or.
Oh, no, I apologize. When I do it off my phone, it just, I didn't select the right email address, so I apologize for that.
Okay, so if we wanna come up with a date.
A separate meeting from a board meeting?
We can, yeah, we can have a committee as a whole.
It could be a study session.
Yeah.
It could be a study session.
You don't like to have those meetings.
Or they're not free.
Oh, I wasn't even thinking about that.
Yeah.
They're not free, okay. Do you wanna do it, do we have anything on the agenda for the next?
For the next study session, no, the only thing is I may request closed.
For an update on the property?
For an update on our closed session. So that's the only thing that I have, that I can think of, and then.
We don't know what's gonna come up, though, right?
Yeah, we don't, but no, I mean, we can, we can put that aside, because it's not, I wanna make it clear, though, we're not talking about policy, we're talking about procedures.
Procedures, yeah.
I just, to protect the board.
Yeah.
No, no.
Use the term procedure.
I said procedures, right.
Well, just use the term procedure to ensure that we're talking about board procedures instead of policy, because policy's different.
Well, I was just, you're saying, because I said policy, well, okay, we don't, well, if we're not doing it in a separate committee meeting, which wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a quorum anyway.
Well, it's good to do with everybody.
Agreed.
Yeah, committee of a whole.
So I think if we set it up for the next study session, it shouldn't be a problem.
Agreed, I mean.
And if we don't have time, we can always do it just as its own meeting. So let's see what happens within the next week, and you can set a date.
God willing, nothing.
Well, hopefully, nothing, yeah, I mean, I just feel like, again, it would just, there was a lot of examples in there, and just things, like I said, like, in regards to how we wanna conduct ourselves as a board, or just saying, well, if this happens, what would we normally do, or if I send an email, you know, do I CC whoever?
This is probably incorporated in the presentation we had last meeting.
Completely separate, procedure.
To where they update the board policies and procedures.
It's, that's just policy.
Yeah, this is more procedural, because it's not, there's no legal, there's nothing that legally binds it.
It's how do we want.
How do we function as a board and administrative office? Trustee Janoon?
Question for you.
I'm sorry, can you forward to me what it is you sent? Because if I look at it, I might be able to put something together, like a survey or something, that you can work on on your own to bring.
They, yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah, it'll streamline the conversation.
But can I say something? So this is where, it's completely separate of the superintendent, it's more of how do we?
Oh, I see.
You know what I mean?
The board.
Understood.
How does the board, like, I can say this, sorry, Kristen's better. Did you wanna say?
Oh, in the housing, there is a contract that all the board, it's just for the board in the first part of the bylaws.
We've never looked at that as a board, though, and signed it.
I know, nothing, you guys know about it.
I know about it really well.
Okay, so that's.
Is there any issues or examples that you're trying to allude to?
No, I'm just.
Because you said we weren't all on the same page.
Well, in regards to, there were a couple of things that, when I was watching, I have to go back and look at it, I was like, "Oh, okay, well, I, how would I wanna handle that?" But then, "How would you wanna handle that?" I have my idea of how I think things should be done, but you may not agree with me. So if we all can agree on how we want things done, then we're all on the same page. And when something comes up, my idea of what should happen, again, may have been different than yours, but if we all agree on it, then this is how we do it. And we all have to be on the same page. Ultimately, we have to be on the same page.
I agree with you, I don't think there's, first of all, I don't think there's an etiquette issue or disrespect.
No.
It's okay for people to not agree.
No, that's not even the same thing, yeah.
I mean, let me finish my thought process, and I know where you're going. It's okay for us not to agree.
Yeah.
Because we see things differently, right? Everybody has a different perspective on what they bring to the table as to how they assume or judge a scenario. But at the end of the day, even if there is a disagreement on something, you know, the consensus is seven people, quorum is quorum. I mean, I think it's okay to do that, because if it, if it makes us better.
Yeah.
There's no problem with it.
Yeah.
But if it's reiterating things, or saying things that aren't actually happening here, then it's always time.
Oh, yeah, of course, well, like Kristen's saying, I didn't realize, actually, I remember hearing about it from previous administrations, but I've never seen it myself. So again, everybody kind of goes over how they'd like to see things handled, and it could, again, it could be as simple as sending an email, or it could be as simple as meeting with, or as simple as stopping in a building. Do you need to tell the building principal? Do you need to tell the superintendent? I mean, like, kind of like.
Those things, I agree, we should, we should all be on the same page.
So this is what I'm saying, so there's, it's not just agreeing on or disagreeing on something.
Their best practices.
There's, but again, so how do you wanna see it?
Yeah, I'm fine with, with that, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
So my concern then would be, why would we wanna take up their time if it's gonna be a meeting of the whole, and it's a board thing? Why do we wanna bother them when it's something that we need to discuss as a body?
Well, if you came to the agreement, they'd have to be aware of it anyway.
Right, we'd bring it back to them.
And they could be part of the discussion, just because if you decide on doing something a certain way, they could chime in and say, "Hey, no, I don't want you to do it that way because of acts."
What she's saying is it's board procedures.
So it's board procedure, and I'd like to see the document that Kristen is talking about.
Yeah, but if we say, if we say you should be able to pop into a building, and they feel differently about it.
Right.
But again, it's still.
I'm not, and I'm not saying we should pop into their building.
If something impacts their day-to-day, where they put the students first, they should have a say.
Why don't we ask him, would you be, wanna be involved in something like that?
Absolutely.
I think we're, hold on, you guys. I think we're.
I don't know if we're all the same page, so I don't understand what you're saying.
I think you guys are understanding where, but it's okay.
What I think you need to do, it's getting really late, it's nine o'clock, we need to go back and read what she sent.
Agreed.
Give your feedback, and then we'll move on from there.
So I've been feeling like this from the very, like, and I had mentioned it to President Barry a while ago, because again, my idea and your idea might be different, but if we have a procedure and we say, "Okay, well," and we agree on it, and again, it could be, it's like in the presentation about somebody from the media, do we want to have one person who replies to a media question? And it could be that we say that we want the superintendent.
So you discussed this with President Barry prior?
No, I said.
No, not recently, she just sent the email to everybody.
I sent the email to everybody, but I said, "I would like to do this," and she said, "Send it." But even if I did discuss it with President Barry, that would be part of the procedure. Do we want, should I send it to just President Barry, or should I send it to everybody, so?
That's fair, your statement's fair.
I just want to be on the same page, so that somebody who wouldn't be upset that if I discussed it with one person prior.
I think it's a noble request. I don't think anything wrong of it, as long as those are the guidelines, I'm fine.
And that's all I wanna be on the same page about, so.
Okay, anything else? The only thing I wanna, I'm sorry, was there something else?
No, I just wanna say, like, it's, this is part of it, right? It's assumptions, and I wanna avoid assumptions, so if we are.
There's assumptions, you can't stop something.
No, but if we're on the same page about how the procedures go, then you, then assumptions can, you can kind of avoid certain assumptions, like having a conversation, just so, just so you're aware. Typically, you would go to the president first.
The greatest document ever written was the United States Constitution, and there are still assumptions by lawmakers, you can't stop something.
I just wanna, you were directing that toward me, we have seven different people on this board. Seven different.
And this is what I'm talking about.
And that's what makes up a board, right?
Okay, guys.
No, hold on, wait, I wanna.
That's what makes up a community.
It's nine o'clock.
It's different people.
I'm sorry.
It's my birthday.
Happy birthday. It's nine o'clock, we need to go home and have a cake for the family. I only wanted to ask about where we are with Naola, how everybody felt, and Truen, did we need to take a vote on it? Which direction do you feel like you wanna head in? I don't know if I wanna open that can of worms up right now, because it's nine o'clock.
Bad timing.
Huh?
Bad timing.
Very bad timing, but if we can put that for discussion.
We can put that on a study session.
Perfect, all right, with that being said.
I think you forgot Sue.
I just want, Sue.
Two quick things.
As long as Sue doesn't say, her head's gonna explode.
Yeah.
I wanted to say the Tin Can Raffle was a great event, I thought everyone did a nice job, and the prizes this year, the donations were absolutely phenomenal, and I didn't win. And then, the other thing was, to the parents and the community, we're back live. Nobody's hardly here, I mean, we appreciate you being here, but we would, we would like to see more community members join in, more parents, so please feel free to come back to our meetings. They're on Monday nights, and they're advertised, and they're at seven o'clock at Riverside. And that's all, have a good week.
Can we thank Mr. Hamud for being here?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much for being here, yeah, we appreciate it.
And thank you, Mr. Hamud, for being my voice, I appreciate you.
I just wanna say, kudos to everybody, happy birthday to Dr. Lazar. Go home and enjoy your family. With that said, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by.
Mr. Sabah.
With that being said, all in favor, signified by Sanai. Any opposed, motion carries, good night, everybody.